Welcome to Brookings County Commission Meeting. This is Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025. We start the meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
By Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under our individual liberty and justice.
Item number three on the agenda is approval agenda. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Any additions, corrections?
And exact session, S D C L one twenty-five-two-one for personnel added at the end.
Okay, where is? Two, parentheses, one?
One, one twenty-five-two-one, item number twelve.
Personnel. Okay, any other additions, corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute timeline per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during this agenda item. Any requested action may be scheduled for a future meeting date. We had nobody signed in this morning. Should move on to item number five, consent agenda items, which includes minutes, travel and education requests, personnel action notices, cellular authorizations, and human services report. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Any additions, corrections? Any comments? Call the roll, please.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number six on the agenda is routine business. Approval of the claims. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Additions, corrections? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, item number B. We'll start with the Sheriff or Highway Department. Brian?
Morning.
Morning.
Well, before I get into my report here, been out as the snow and weather's been changing here. We've had an awful lot of change here in the last week, but I think the roads overall have been in pretty decent shape. We did not go out Saturday. We waited until Sunday morning and, well, I guess now we got clear roads and hopeful for safe travel for everybody as the weather continues to be cold, but overall, I think it's going fairly well. We got a fairly green crew, so we're training as we go. And I think the crew's responding pretty well. We're making our operations work and we're getting our routes covered. Secondly, here, just kind of wanted to go over with the commission on what County Road sixteen A overall costs us. I know the, the upper portion is kind of a lot of down in the weeds as far as what each particular item costs and how it's calculated, but the bottom there for those two and a half miles or two point four-six miles costs about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a mile to put that double chip seal down in that blotter on County Road sixteen A. Is there any questions on any of this?
Any questions for Brian?
I do know, just receiving a lot of comments on the road. Looks really good and everything.
After the first of the year, I think I'm gonna approach the commission about how we should move forward with sixteen A. I know we've gotten some recent traffic counts. We're gonna continue to try to collect traffic count data to decide how we're gonna move forward. I've been speaking with Banner. We have some structures that do need to be addressed and how we want to move forward with them, some legwork that I think that we could do to better position us to decide how we should move forward with that project. But just to kind of give the commission an update, I haven't sent any of the information out. We just got it last Thursday and I didn't get a chance to send it out, but we're looking at seventy-eight hundred vehicles a day on that road. So it is a very heavily traveled stretch of road, but I think we need to have a plan in place looking ahead, moving forward on the decisions that we can make to maybe better position us, one, for future grants, or two, work we can do to help us make decisions on, on what we can put in and out there as far as structures. And then down the long road, it might not cost us much once we do decide to make something more permanent.
Brian, how many, before we did the double chip seal, how many cars on, on average a day do we have?
Two fifty to four hundred.
Okay, so doubled.
And, you know, a lot of that, it was hard to collect data on that, Sean, because Aurora was doing their water and sewer upgrades. And then once the floodgates did open up, obviously that road was, was rough. I mean, it was washboards from one end to the other and very dusty, so I think a lot of the traveling public chose not to take it. But now that the blotter's been put out there, it's a, it's a fairly decent road and that increased the traffic quite significantly. I know there's some that have talked to me about it. They, they didn't even know it was out there and one day they took it and it was awfully nice, so now they continue to take it. But overall, I think what we have out there right now is, is gonna be holding up well for the traffic that's on it, but I think in the future, we do need to take a look at what we can do to improve that corridor, especially the structures.
You mentioned further grants. The grant we applied through, through the state, have we heard anything?
I'll let Stacy talk on that.
So the build grant for planning that was, we did not receive that. We were, actually did a lot better on it. We did, we had an after-action meeting and there was certain criteria that we had to meet and there were just a couple of the criteria that we scored a little too low on for that. Looking at maybe other ways. There was another grant for, it was like rural and tribal access grant that we did back in September, but we have not heard back on that one yet. And that one was supposed to be kind of first come, first serve, but I don't know, I'd have to reach out to whaling it at Banner to see kind of when we're expected to hear back on that one. I'm not sure when that is.
Be nice to check with them, see how it's going, so.
And lastly, I'd like to touch on Samara Avenue. At our progress meeting last Wednesday, I think there was just some few minor items that the contractor needed to address before we opened that road up. We did have the road open through the weekend so we could move snow through that corridor, but officially tomorrow morning, the, the signs will be down on the city and the county side, on their city side streets and our county road. It'll be open for the winter and then work will commence next July sixth, twenty-twenty-six to finish that last phase. But some of the items that may need to be addressed that were touched on at that meeting is one seating on the phases one and two, and then any of the additional dirt work that might need to happen before that takes place would be addressed then in the spring.
Okay. Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marty from Sheriff's Office.
Good morning.
Morning, Sheriff.
This is a quick overview of the jail. We're down in numbers right now, which is good. We have thirty-four presently in jail. Fifteen of those are, are Brookings County inmates. Otherwise, we have two from the Flandue Sioux Tribe, one from Hamlin, one from Moody. We have eleven U.S. Marshal Services, right now eleven. So I think, I told staff that they need to enjoy, they got a little pressure off them right now, but that, you never know when that's gonna change. Twenty-four-seven is down too as far as participants as a total. We only have eighty-nine. We haven't seen that for a long time. There's thirty-eight still coming in twice a day, five remote breath tests. We have three on SCRAM. UAs are seventeen, so we're down there a little bit too, so that kind of helps, helps with staff and so forth. The other thing is that we're still working stop sign violations and at two oh four and four seventy-one, you know, we put some stuff on Facebook and we had a million-two views. I think that's more than we have a population, so I'm sure that's not all South Dakota looking at that, but you can tell how Facebook can, can get that information out. And we did some media releases and different things about stop signs and, and, you know, we're trying to do what we can to prevent any future, future accidents and so forth. So that intersection still is probably a priority. We try to work out when we can, but when we had our first snow event, it's hard to work stop sign and do those things when we're doing other things and helping cover slidance and so forth on the interstate also. So, other than that, we continue to stay busy. So you guys have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Sit.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Bob from the Development?
Good morning.
Morning. Bob.
The last couple of weeks, we've had, we did get our local emergency planning grant submitted to D A N R. We'll see, that's typically done on a yearly basis at the end of November. We actually got to use five-one-one on the first snowfall, the first time it snowed and we had the forty mile an hour winds. The sheriff contacted me. I guess that's something we haven't really discussed a whole lot as a, as a county, but we have the ability now to go on five-one-one, the statewide system, and advise no, there's, there's two things I can do. Advise no travel or advise, there's another term for it, but then it's just not, they advise you not to travel at all and then there's no travel allowed, I guess, is the two categories. And I typically rely on the sheriff's department, typically the sheriff is the one that I, I follow orders on that. Does the commission have a recommendation to do something else?
I don't believe we do.
Because the deputy, in my justification on that is the deputies, the sheriff has the deputies and they're out in the community. And if the, if the winds, you know, I can, the winds can be blowing forty miles an hour in town and nothing, not, not in the county, so we may not want the whole county, but the stipulation is when we do no travel advised, it's countywide.
Correct.
So.
I think work with the sheriff and the highway department and, and make decision. Murray, can, tomorrow, the one o'clock, that meeting with the DOT and who's all, is Bob, are you involved with that also?
Yep.
Okay, that's good. Get everybody involved, the state and, and the surrounding communities too, so.
I put out the, I put out the unnecessary travel.
Okay.
Yeah, that was no travel advised, not, not, not road closed.
Commissioner, any feelings on what should be posted or shunt or? I think it's been going well the way in the past, so.
Well, that was the first time we had, we got a chance to use it and there was a bug in it. They, the highway was going out at five o'clock in the morning, so I went on the computer at home at four forty-five and I tried to shut it off, the message, and it wouldn't shut off. So I contacted DOT at eight o'clock when they came to work and it was a bug on their side. So that shouldn't happen anymore. I should be able to, if, if the highway's going out at five and they recommend people can start traveling again, then we'll, we'll pull it out. We don't wanna, we don't wanna put it on and keep it on continuously 'cause then people, you know, people do have to go to work and we understand all that, but we also don't want them on there if the winds are blowing sixty miles an hour and you got snow coming down. It's just dangerous. Very good. Well, yeah, and I'll be at that meeting tomorrow at one o'clock and we'll, we can also discuss with the sheriff during that meeting. We do have a zoning meeting tonight. We got a PPC meeting on January eleventh and that's all I've got. Any questions?
Any question for Bob?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the department head reports. We do have a scheduled nine o'clock, but we'll start on our regular business. Item eight, letter A, action to approve resolution number twenty-five dash fifty-nine, a twenty-twenty-six bridge improvement grant, resolution authorized and submission of applications, structure zero-six dash one-eight-one dash two-three-zero. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion second. Comments?
Yeah, I wanted to kind of note on this just so the new commissioners understand the process. We were awarded a preliminary engineering grant for this structure in two thousand and twenty-two, and this recent, most recent, which was done this, this last summer, bridge inspection deemed this structure to be D-rated. And Colin's gonna come in and talk about, talk to the commission and kind of touch on this at the next meeting. But with the D-rated load rating, the, put this structure a little more eligible as far as the points that it would score in the program. So we feel that moving forward with this, with the Brookings County being responsible for twenty percent of the project for replacement.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none. Call roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, action approved, agreement number twenty-five dash eighty-seven, a Brookings County Detention Center inmate housing contract between Brookings County and Duell County. Have motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion second. Any comments? Any comments from the sheriff that are in jail? Pretty routine, consistent with the other ones we have approved. Okay. No further comments. Call roll, please.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action approved agreement number twenty-five dash eighty-eight, a memorandum of understanding between SDSU and Brookings County regarding four-H programming and services. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Any comments?
This is a pretty standard MOU that we do every year with SDSU extension. The amount, the dollar amount that's budgeted for the salary is budgeted for, budgeted for in twenty-twenty-six.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, action approved agreement number twenty-five dash eighty-nine, an application for occupancy of the right-of-way county highway made by Chad Washey in Lake Sanyaic Township. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Have motion second. Any comments?
I know Commissioner Vanderwall and myself had talked about this and I believe, I, I don't want to speak for you, Kelly, but you did reach out to the neighboring landowner. So I don't see any issues with it.
Okay. No further comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. Motion carried. Item E, action approved agreement number twenty-five dash ninety, a three-year ESRI small municipal and county government enterprise agreement. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Comments? Sean?
This is a reoccurring agreement that we have every three years. It allows us to get, the county is the entity that signs for this agreement and then we bill the city and BMU for, each of them pay a third of it. We, we share this agreement and the licensing that comes from it.
Okay. Any questions from board? Comments? Okay, well, thanks for your comments, Sean. We'll call the roll, please.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, action approved and authorized I T administrator Sean Plomman to sign agreement number twenty-five dash ninety-one, a one-year licensing maintenance agreement for secure email licensing between Brookings County and Secure South Dakota. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Comments?
Several months ago, you approved a memorandum of understanding with the Secure SD group. They're the ones who are allocating the grant resource, or the grant funds from a twenty-twenty-four Senate bill. This would replace and upgrade our existing email system for a minimum of one year. If, in the event the funds are not renewed, the cost would fall back on us, at which point we would evaluate what portions of this enhanced service we would want to keep and adjust our budget accordingly. This is something that we're already paying for ourselves. This is just an improvement upon what we have and they're also paying for it.
Okay. Any comments? Hearing none. Call roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G, action approved and authorized I T administrator Sean Plomman to sign agreement number twenty-five dash ninety-two, an agreement for the setup for a secure email solution between Brookings County and Secure South Dakota.
This is part of the same agreement, just allowing the vendor to do the setup. This is a one-time fee. The other one, the, the previous agreement was an annual expense.
Okay. Last three, they all kind of work together then?
Just these two.
Okay.
The, the next one is something different.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none. Call roll.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item H, action approved quote from Safe and Secure for security upgrades at the highway grounds and weed and pest building. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Comments?
This is an upgrade and expansion of the existing security system out at the highway department to include the former beta garage that we recently purchased. It, it includes cameras and door control systems.
Okay. And some of the equipment out there was actually utilized or not?
We were able to save money on some of the wiring, but the cameras themselves are from a manufacturer that quit selling in the United States in twenty nineteen, so the cameras are quite old. And then we are expanding off of the highway department rather than getting a, a completely new system.
Okay. Any questions from board? Hearing none. Call roll.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have a question. Are those cameras gonna be able, am I gonna be able to monitor those cameras from my office?
We can, we'll have, I'll have to let you know.
Okay. I used to be able to do that at the O E C and the highway, and I'm no longer to do that. I need support in my office, monitor those cameras.
Okay. Item I, action automatically supplement for unanticipated expense incurred and reimbursement made to the Brookings County in the amount of three hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifteen cents for the Samara Avenue project. Receipt number zero-zero-seven-five-three-seven-eight-six to general ledger line two-zero-one dash four dash three-one-one dash four-two-two-six. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Any comments?
This is just reimbursement from the city of Volga, just as it says, for that Samara Avenue project. We are, the county is paying those bills and then we just seek reimbursement from the city of Volga. And I'm working with Banner to make sure that the improvements that are city-only improvements with Samara are getting billed correctly as well.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. Motion carried. Item J, action approved request to fill vacancy for part-time female correctional officer in detention center. Do I have motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. Motion carried. Item K, be it noted, commission chairperson Larry Jensen signed the following documents for the Community Development Block Grant for the Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness Construction Project, acceptance of work letter, certification of audit requirements for the year twenty-four and for the year twenty-five, and the C D B G final financial statement, certificate of completion, and administrative closeout form. These are all be it noted items.
And with these documents, that officially closes out that C D B G grant for that project. So that is nice to have wrapped up by the end of the year.
Okay. We have a couple of minutes. Can you cover your report or should we wait?
I think we can wait.
Yeah, let's wait on that. We got a couple minute break here.
Make you guys sweat a little bit for a couple minutes.
Make you guys quiet a little bit for a couple of minutes.
Okay, it, it is nine o'clock now. We have a scheduled agenda item. A public hearing and action approve the liquor license renewal for Shaday Vineyard. I have a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. But now open a public hearing. Is there any proponents that would like to speak to this?
Morning everyone. I'm Dylan Ringling, owner, owner of Shaday Vineyard and Winery. Obvious proponent for this. Our, we had a new employee working that day and it was, um, she actually hadn't even completed her ServSafe yet. So now we're implementing, um, ServSafe to be implemented, that's on our onboarding process now. So hopefully that will take care of any, um, further issues with this. And they'll be well educated before they start their job on how to card somebody as they walk in the door.
Okay. That, that was a result of compliance check?
That's right, yep.
Okay.
Is that the only violation that you guys have had?
We've had one like, it was, I want to say three or four years ago. So it was outside of the probationary period, so.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Um, any other proponents?
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Any opponents? Any opponents that would like to speak? I would now close the public hearing and entertain any comments from the board. Any comments from the board? I'd just like to see that you are going through the programs and the certification classes and make sure that everybody's doing what they need to do to be compliant, so.
The only comment that I would have, Jen Baker in the finance office, is, as Dylan stated, Shaday Vineyard did fail the most recent compliance check. Um, and our ordinance requires any of those entities that do fail the compliance check, they're required to come before the commission, before you approve or deny their renewal for the next year. So this is, as it states, um, they're applying to renew their on-sale liquor license for twenty-twenty-six. But due to the failed compliance check, they are required to come before you, um, before you make that approval or denial.
Okay. Any other comments? The sheriff?
They're, they're making an effort to get certified and so forth, their employees, so I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay. No further comments. Call roll please.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, item B on the scheduled agenda items, we have the Dubrook FFA Agricultural Issues Team Presentation. Um, Ashley Weason is advisor. Like to come forward and introduce yourselves.
So I will introduce kind of why we're here. Um, so one of the leadership development events that FFA members, which I, I don't know how many of you are familiar with FFA, Kelly, I know you are. Um, so the students, these students behind us have picked the agricultural issues competition. And so within that contest, what they do is they are supposed to pick a somewhat controversial issue within the agricultural industry. So it can fall under, um, the food industry, animal, plant, environmental, etc. Um, these students have chosen wind energy and they are not allowed to take a stance. So they are only allowed to present pros and cons as a team. We are not allowed to say one or the other. We're supposed to remain as neutral as possible while kind of giving the opinions of both sides. So they're scored on their presentation, um, which they actually, for their presentation, they act out kind of a county commission meeting of sorts about wind energy. Um, and so they have some students on the pro side, some students on the con side. They have to present it in front of at least five stakeholder groups prior to our state competition, which happens on Sunday and Monday. Um, and then at the end, they are quizzed by the judges and have to answer questions while still remaining neutral. So we have to take all of our personal opinions about how we feel about wind energy out of it. So, um, these students have been working on this for probably, what, a month? Our state, or our districts was the seventeenth of November and they had to start this prior. Along with their presentation, they have to turn in a paper portfolio, walking through the advantages of it, disadvantages of it, the historical background of the topic, things like that. So I will let them present. Um, if you guys have any questions for them at the end, I'm sure they would love to be quizzed about wind energy. Sometimes they get people that actually know something to ask them questions and sometimes they have people that don't know anything about wind energy. So, um, do you guys have any questions before they start? No? Okay. I will let them go then.
I'm Reagan Klein.
I'm Maddie Schultz.
I'm Charlie Olson.
I'm Reagan Davis.
I'm Hayden Cooper.
I'm Claire Dornby.
I'm Bailey Ay.
Good. Good morning, everyone. I now call this meeting of the Brookings County Zoning Board to order. Today, we're hearing input on the Prose Prairie Ridge Wind Project. A sixty turbine development planned across roughly twenty-five thousand acres of farmland in eastern Brookings County. As a reminder, this is a public hearing and no final decision will be made tonight. We ask that speakers keep comments respectful and to the point. We'll begin with those in favor.
Thank you, Chair Taylor. My name is Tom Larson and my family has farmed near Volga for over forty years. When approached by Prairie Ridge Renewables, I did my homework. In South Dakota, wind is a major and growing part of our energy mix. Wind supplied approximately fifty-nine percent of the state's in-state electricity generation in twenty-twenty-four as issued by the U.S. Energy Information Administration. The lease agreement that I signed will pay about six to eight thousand dollars per megawatt of installed turbine capacity. Calculated through Land App, this is consistent with national trends of five to eight thousand dollars per year. With two turbines each rated at two megawatts each, that means there's twelve to sixteen thousand dollars income per year that I can use towards variable crop input costs, equipment repairs, and gives my children a reason to stay in agriculture. The footprint of each turbine is minimal, less than an acre per unit. So I can continue to graze livestock and plant crops right up to the base. This helps diversify my income without giving up the land's production role.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Next we hear from a nearby resident with concerns.
Good morning. I'm Karen Johnson and I live about a half mile from one of the proposed turbine sites. While I care deeply about the livelihoods of farmers and the quality of air, I'm also concerned about the quality of life in our area. These wind turbines will be five hundred feet tall with rotating blades and blinking lights visible from multiple parts of our communities. Another thing is that we live in the Coteau Prairie, which is, which done in a research by the Game Fish and Parks is one of the most wind-rich areas. Additionally, the property values of our home done, of thing done in a rural community close to us had showed that property values decrease when they're located next to these wind towers. Finally, the roads in our area were built decades ago and all this heavy equipment on our gravel roads create washboard. So I ask that the board make firm commitments that the, the roads will be repaired.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next we hear from Mark Davis, a project manager with Prairie Ridge Renewables.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Mark Davis with Prairie Ridge Renewables. Before I begin, I'd like to address Karen's point of roadwork commitments. We have already begun writing up plans for how we can be of help to the county in keeping near gravel roads in tip-top shape. Now, our project will bring major benefits to Brookings County. To give perspective, South Dakota currently has around three thousand four hundred fifty megawatts of installed wind capacity across twenty-five active wind farms as supplied by the U.S. Energy Information Administration. If our sixty turbine project averages two megawatts each, we're talking about a hundred twenty megawatts of installed capacity. At the state tax rate of three thousand dollars per megawatt of nameplate capacity annually as supplied by the South Dakota Department of Revenue, that equates to nearly three hundred sixty thousand dollars per year of capacity tax paid to the state and county. Further, our company projects around a hundred construction jobs for buildup and eight to ten full-time maintenance positions, positions once operational. We have art, we have conducted preliminary wildlife studies and referenced the South Dakota's Game Fish and Parks siting guidelines, which note that the Prairie Coteau region is a sensitive corridor. The lease payments for landowners will be structured as the national average indicates, around five thousand to eight thousand dollars per megawatt. We're committed to working with you in, in setting turbine spacing, lighting mitigations, and public communications.
Mr. Davis, thank you for the information. Could you clarify what happens in twenty-five years when these turbines are no, are no longer efficient? Who pays for the restoration and if they are not restored, where do you recycle them?
Absolutely. Our standard lease agreement includes a decommissioning bond. The contract stipulates that at the end of the twenty-to-twenty-five-year operational period, the turbine and any related infrastructure will be removed and the land returned to its prior condition. Most turbines are sent to landfills, but some companies are developing and using alternatives such as mechanical shredding for cement production or more advanced thermal recycling options. Further, the bond is held by the county to guarantee compliance even if ownership changes.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Hi, I'm Ryan Olson and I currently own Astoria Village Inn in Astoria. I have owned this cafe for nearly ten years and I've already seen the major, the major impacts on previous construction projects in our area. When any of these construction projects are happening in or around Astoria, it brings a large number of customers to my cafe. When these construction workers are out working hard all day, my cafe is a place for them to come in and relax. They can enjoy delicious food and drink and even play on the video lottery machines. This altogether directly contributes to my ability in expanding my cafe and making new menu, kitchen, and customer scene area improvements.
This is a great point you bring to the table. As a local in my hometown cafe, it's a little absurd to me, walking in and not being able to find a spot. This also makes me wonder how you'll be able to continue running your business after these projects are over.
With the workers coming in for breakfast, lunch, supper, and enjoying the extra amenities, my cafe will be bringing in major extra income. This income will be helpful for me to, expanding my cafe and continuing to attract customers from near and far, making an even better hometown hangout.
Thank you to you all. Next we hear from Dr. Emily Peterson of the South Dakota Wildlife Federation.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dr. Emily Peterson, an environmentalist and advocate for wildlife. While we at the South Dakota Wildlife Federation support clean energy, we must pay attention to the potential trade-offs. The Prairie Coteau region is noted in state guidelines by the Game Fish and Parks Department as unique and particularly sensitive to wind project sightings because of its ice age glacial features and high average wind speeds. According to Land App, South Dakota's average wind speed is around twenty-one point three miles per hour. This ranks South Dakota in the top ten windiest states in America. In twenty-seventeen, wind energy contributed to around thirty percent of South Dakota's electricity. According to the Clean Grid Alliance, this is now closer to fifty-nine percent. That rapid increase poses serious questions about cumulative wildlife impact. For example, migratory birds and bats can be seriously impacted by wind turbines. Every year across America, there are approximately six hundred eighty-one thousand birds killed, according to the American Bird Conservancy. This is an alarming number considering the vital role these birds play in our ecosystems, spreading seeds and controlling pests. We are asking that the board require the monitoring of bird and bat mortality rates post-construction, setting back the placement of these turbines from known wetlands and wildlife habitats, and placing the turbines on already diserted grounds whenever possible. We are not opposing wind in principle, just asking for careful strategic sighting so the future generations can inherit both renewable energy and thriving wildlife.
Dr. Peterson, I appreciate your perspective. The reason I decided to put the turbines on my land was because I'm trying to keep my farm running for the next generation. With crop prices volatile and input costs rising, the payments give me stability. From our perspective, the turbines are a second crop of sorts. They don't stop me from farming the land and yes, I'm willing to support mitigation measures to protect wildlife and habitat.
Thank you to you both. Next we hear from Commissioner Blake Jensen.
Thank you, Chair Taylor. I've listened to the comments and I appreciate the depth of concern and hope. Our region is heavily dependent on agriculture, but we're also seeing demographic shifts, farm consolidation, and economic pressure. Projects like this offer additional revenue, but we must ensure local residents are heard and local roads, schools, and ecosystems are supported. I think the board should consider the following as a part of its recommendation process. A road repair agreement funded by the developer. A community fund for local infrastructure and schools financed by turbine tax revenue. A wildlife monitoring and reporting system with community access to results, and the transparent decommissioning and bond requirement. Wind energy can absolutely be a part of our future, but with the community, not at the expense of the community.
Thank you, Commissioner Jensen. Today, we've heard a number of stakeholders. Farmers seeking stability, residents concerned about noise and aesthetic, environmental advocate protecting habitat, business in need of customer, and industry offering economic opportunity. Wind has become a major factor in South Dakota's energy future. And as the U.S. Energy Information Administration states, wind currently supplies nearly sixty percent of our in-state electricity generation. This is about more than turbines. It's about land use, identity, economy, and ecology. Thank you for your comments. Meeting adjourned.
So, that's all we have. If you guys have any questions for them, feel free to ask or any feedback, input, anything. Like I said, our state competition, um, we leave on Sunday. They compete Sunday night and they'll get results on Monday. And so if there's anything you feel like we should add or take out or anything like that, we're open to any feedback or questions, but we really appreciate you guys letting us come and take some of your valuable time. The kids were a little excited to get out of school, I think, but, um, it's always nice for them to present in front of a more high-profile, if you will, um, audience than just, um, our local people in white that know them and have known them for years. So, thank you.
Any commission?
I think you guys did an amazing job. Uh, just, we probably do, shouldn't have told you this before, but, uh, you know, we are live-streamed, so more than just us saw this today. So at least you weren't too, too nervous, but good job and good luck this weekend.
Thank you.
Where's, where's the competition at the next step?
Um, the state competition is in Rapid City.
It's in Rapid?
Yep. So the top, the top two teams from each of our districts, so we have eight districts in our state. Um, the top two teams from each district move on to state. So we were second in our district. Um, so there'll be sixteen teams roughly if they all brought two teams at state. And then the top team at state competition will move on to compete next October in Indianapolis at the National Convention. Yep.
Very impressive. You guys did a really good job. Um, I'm, I'm amazed. You give me hope in the next generation. Well done. Very thorough. The apron was a nice touch. Well done.
They do have, they do have posters that like talk about who they are and give their names, but we just thought that was a lot to lug around as we're, we're having another presentation later today.
Okay.
Um, so we didn't bring those, but that does add a little special effect to what they do as well, so.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a nice touch. So, encourage, I'm looking forward to hearing how you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You guys did an amazing job. You're gonna represent Dubrook and Brookings, Duell Counties very well. Keep your heads high and, uh, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, back to our agenda. Uh, item number nine is Commission Department Director's report.
The work plan was included with my staff report. Everything that you see in red is new information or updated information from the last time this was presented. So, um, Brian helped, uh, Brian and Bob always help me with, with this, with this report, getting me all of the, the information that they are aware of. As far as all of the big projects are concerned with highway, um, just other projects going on uh, with highway, other bridge projects. So far, for the rural access infrastructure, these are not approved yet. You can see there, Eureka Lake and Sterling Volga. I am still working with a couple of townships who submitted some information, but that, it wasn't complete, so I'm kind of still working with them, so there might be some additions there. And then Bob has submitted some information here, some updated information regarding the Big Sioux River diversion, some information about the Carbon Pipeline Subcommittee, which has now been kind of put to rest after that, the ordinance 2507 will become effective tomorrow. Samara Avenue, just a quick update there, phases one, two, one and two, pretty much complete now. Phase three, again, as Brian had mentioned earlier in the meeting, will begin in July of 2026. Some capital improvements, new HVAC, and now also new boilers for this building for next year. Courthouse, the main thing there is interior painting. I forgot to add carpet as well is going to be put at the courthouse next year. So personnel, the, the, basically, the, we have three, three-year contracts that will start here in January for both, both of our, both highway, or both union groups with highway and sheriff, so. Those are the updates, unless you have any other questions for me on that information. Otherwise, each of you also received a letter from Banner regarding that diversion channel, the Big Sioux River diversion channel. That was included in my packet, and then also, I think I handed out each of your letters this morning with that. Other than that, just some upcoming dates. Tonight is the Ag Appreciation Banquet. I know I have RSVP'd for a few, a couple, I think, three of you to attend that tonight. Tomorrow, an addition that came in, in late last week was the Mayor's Holiday Celebration and Awards. Again, that's tomorrow. Out at the Dakota Bank Center, it starts at 6 o'clock. I don't think there's any need to RSVP for that, but I think all of you probably received maybe an email invitation for that. Thursday, for those who have RSVP'd for, on the Innovation Campus Celebration out at the Research Park, that starts at 5 o'clock. And then just kind of looking out a little ways, offices will close at noon on Christmas Eve Day, will be closed Christmas Day, will be closed New Year's Day. And then something to kind of put on your calendars, a little bit, a little ways out yet, January 21st is Brookings Day at the Capitol, so make sure that's on your calendars if you want to attend that, and we'll be getting some more information as that gets a little bit closer. That's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions aboard? Okay, thank you. Item number 10 on the agenda, State's Attorney's Office Report. Item number 11, Commissioner Reports and Discussion Items. Commissioner VanderWaal.
Thank you. On Tuesday, November 18, I attended the 4-H Recognition Night at the Brookings Outdoor Adventure Center. Very well attended. They had to set up additional tables and chairs for that evening. Great to see all the interest in that program, and the weather was great that evening. And then yesterday, December 1, at 11:00, I was on the webinar with the State Association. The topic yesterday was about data centers, so the Dual Counties Chairman of Commissioners was on, along with a guy from Ellendale, North Dakota. Very, very interesting. And that's my report. Thank you.
Commissioner Post.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Miller.
Thank you. On the 19th, I attended the Beta Board Meeting, enjoying that role, and I'm constantly amazed by the number of people that use that, 160,000 rides a year. That's a big operation, and the number of buses, they, they are facing some real budget challenges coming up with things happening at the federal level, so they've got some challenges to figure out there. And then yesterday, I also attended the South Dakota Counties Zoom, and I, I agree with Kelly, that was very informative. Don Flaherty from Ellendale did a great job of explaining those data centers, and what a huge role that's going to have in our future, and it's, it's here to stay, and how do we get ready for that? How do we prepare for that? So that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Hostler.
Yeah, so on the 19th, I, we, I attended the BEDC Board Meeting over at the Innovation, and of course, with the merger approaching, the BEDC is looking at how they're going to transition over to that one entity with the four that are, that are combined, looking for, looking at different fundings and, and, and that, where their money and fundings are going to go and how that's going to all operate. And then on the 25th, I attended the Merger Board Meeting. Of course, we're in the process of the CEO search, which, if numbers, if numbers, I think numbers have escaped me, but we've received close to 30 applications for that CEO from in and around the area to outside the area, which we will start interviews and that after it's been weeded, weeded down for quality candidates sometime in January, with hopefully the, the CEO starting end of January. But then there are also, with that merged organization, we're going through branding and, and going through everything to create that new organization through the four. And then on the first, yesterday, I attended the BCOAC Board Meeting out at the Outdoor Adventure Center. Got numbers, which Joe will probably present to us after the first of the year, but the programming in that, in that area has just exploded in the last six months, and it's nice to see the, how that is, how that is really expanding. And then on discussion items, I guess, I've, I've been reached out to by several, several citizens in regards to our non-mandated funds, specifically to, to our non-mandated funds that, for the Brookings Library, and I wanted to bring up, and for possible discussions for the board, I think this is the, where we, where we can talk about that, on really what our, what our ideas were behind that when we, when we talked in June about those non-mandated funds. You know, if I remember right, and with, with the monies that we've, that we've been allocated, that we allocate through there, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Brookings Library asked for $35,000 in, in funding, is that correct? And we've historically given $25,000? And this year, we reallocated some of those to different areas. I believe, what was it, 5,000, 5,000 extra to the Domestic Abuse Shelter because of their increased, increased needs, 5,000 additional to the United Way for their increased needs and, and federal funding cuts. And then the new one that we did was the ICAP, 60-plus meals, is that correct? Or what was that?
60s plus dining was new, and then the funding for United Way was also new for 2026.
Yes, yep. So, I mean, I, I think, I think there's some, there's some issues out there that, that got posted online, and of course, you got to take everything online with a grain of salt, but, you know, through the, you know, reviewing the, the letter and the, the questions that, or the, the requests that we received from the public library, and we received this, I think, in April, if I remember right, down under funding on that, it, it seemed like they, they kind of teed up a little bit, that they were possibly looking at funding cuts and, and looking at other ways to increase revenue, and I, I believe that the issue with them possibly charging out of, or out-of-city residents was already in the back of their minds, and what did, what was our, what was our percentage of funding that we, or that we reallocated? Was it?
1%.
Was it 1% of their total budget?
What they presented to us was approximately a $1.5 million budget that they have for the Brookings Public Library. We reduced our funding from $25,000 to $10,000, so $15,000, which would represent about 1% of their budget.
Okay. And all of these numbers and everything for ours and the city is online, right, for anybody to, to look at for those? Okay. I don't know if any other commissioners have any, any questions or any concerns, or any, any ideas that they'd like to?
I, I'd just like to say, when we begin our budget process in June, we start the day out, it's all scheduled. Each department comes in and makes a request. At the end of the day, we get down to the non-mandated requests. I believe there's 22 different entities here that apply for our non-mandated funds, and we go down through those. We try to stay as consistent as possible. We did have a couple new ones this year, like, like Hostler said, the Community Action, the 60-plus dining, and also the United Way, how we funded those, and, and the Firefighters' Association's, the true budget of, of equipment needs, and also with the Domestic Abuse Shelter we increased. I felt we justified what we did there. As we move forward, we don't know what's going to happen with the property tax in the near future, and whatever happens out in Pierre will happen. How much it'll affect us, I have no idea, but these non-mandated, I mean, in the near future, these could actually go away if, if funding is reduced and we have to use this money elsewhere. I felt we were fair with what we'd done, and I just hopefully clear the air and get the facts out there, the dollar amounts that we actually cut from the city library. Any other commissioners, any comments?
Well, I, I had a couple people reach out to me as well about this. There was some concerns, and one of them stated that they were disappointed that we decided to charge for the cards. I just want to make it very clear that we had no role in that. The city, or the library made that decision. That was not our role. We did spend a fair amount of time on this and chatting. It's, you know, times are tough, and we've got limited funds, and we had to make some tough decisions, and when you look at the numbers, that, by the library's numbers, 7% of the county population has a library card. That's a pretty small number. So we were elected to represent the majority, and we gave what we could, and we have, again, limited resources to spread out there, but I, I would like to reiterate what Larry said. I think there was some bad press put out there that, that the commission decided to do this. We, we did not. We're trying to do the best we can with the limited sources, resources that we have, so.
Thank you. Commissioner VanderWaal.
I just, you guys have done a great job of expressing my, my thoughts as well. As a, as a commission, we're elected to, to represent and to do the best job with what we can with the information that we have at the time. That's, that's my point. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Back to Commissioner Reports. I also attended the 4-H Awards Night that evening. There was well over 200 people there, and like Commissioner VanderWaal said, they had to set up extra tables, and there was a lot of awards handed out, and kudos to the staff and everybody for a good evening and how they had it all set up. On December 1st, also attended the BCOAC Advisory Board Meeting. Like Sean said, the numbers keep increasing. I believe attendance was up over 4%, and also the programming coming up in this, next year is, they've already had more requests and, for different training and such out there, so that's going well. With that concludes my report. Item number 12, executive session, according to South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, Pronacy 1, Personnel. Do I have a motion to enter?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, sitting five, I say an aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carried.